Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of City Council to order.
We acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on the traditional land of the Anishna beg people. The Anishna beg include the Odawa, Ojibwe and Barowatomi nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We're dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis and Inuit people. Please be seated. Welcome everyone to our virtual City Council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with the public health guidelines around the COVID-19 pandemic, councils continuing to practice physical distancing with the members of council, the executive management team and the city clerk participating via video conference. Members of the senior leadership team that have items on the agenda tonight are not visible but are available to answer any questions. Our first business item tonight is confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the City Council meeting that was held January 25th have been circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes are adopted as printed and circulated. Well, it's a pleasure tonight to actually have an awards and recognition item. We often before COVID used City Council as an opportunity to bring people in from the community and recognize important accomplishments. And tonight we will be doing that with the 2020 Heritage Berry Awards. So I will now call on councillor Reetma, Chair of the Heritage Berry Committee, to say a few words about those Heritage Berry Awards. Hello, to be joined by councillors Jim Harris and councillor Keenan Ailin for the presentation. The award recipients are available online for the presentation and recipients, I know you may wish to say a few words after you have been recognized. So with that, I'll hand it over to councillor Reetma.
Well, thank you, Mayor Lehman, and indeed it is a historic time. Next week is Heritage Week, so we're going to celebrate that. And in fact, we are making a little history here tonight because this is going to be the very first time that we give out any awards by Zoom. And you know, since it's the first time, things may not go well. So I hope that you bear with us and we'll get it done. There are three awards tonight. 62 William Street, Trinity Anglican Church on Collier and 113 Collier Street. This year, the awards are going to be given out by the ward councillor. They've been asked to do the honors. So the first councillor will be councillor Jim Harris to do 62 William Street, and then councillor Ailin will do the other two. So councillor Harris.
Thank you councillor Reetma. It is my distinct pleasure to recognize Elizabeth Duffamy Andrews and John Andrews and their wonderful property at 62 William Street. And I have a write-up on their home, which I would like to read. Set on the corner of William and Holgate in the Allendale section of Berry, Patton House is a double walled, orange brick vernacular Victorian construction with a wraparound veranda and balcony. It retains many original features including barsboard trim, oak floors, 12-inch baseboards and old growth pine pocket doors. A rare rosette window overlooking the porch and stained glass transoms over the second floor interior doorways make this non-designated heritage home unique in its neighborhood. John Patton, the original owner, was a locomotive engineer with the Grand Trunk Railway. He and his wife Jessie Megason raised their two children here, Mary, born in 1911, and Jack, born in 1916. Jack was the first man from the Berry area to earn his wings as a fighter pilot under the British Commonwealth air training plan during the war. He joined the Battle of Britain 401 Squadron flying Spitfires in support of operations over the English Channel and Northern France. He was shot down and killed over the channel on May 1st, 1942, at the age of 25. In addition to the built features, visitors will see air artifacts related to the Patton family and to the history of the house. Elizabeth Duffamy Andrews, the recipient of the Heritage Award for 62 William, recently published an article in The New Quarterly. The article won first place in the 2020 Edna Stabler Personal Essay Prize, an award given by The New Quarterly. The committee selected 62 William Street for a Heritage Award to recognize its connection to the Patton family as well as Elizabeth's efforts to preserve and share that history with her community. It's my pleasure again to thank Ms. Duffamy Andrews and Mr. John Andrews for their support of heritage and for their care of this wonderful heritage home. Thank you.
All right, and then I'll ask councillor Keenan Ailin to do the other two on Collier Street.
Thank you councillor Reetma, and thank you to the Heritage Committee for all their hard work. As we know, downtown Berry and Ward II is full of history and it's amazing that we get to celebrate it here this evening. So the building that you see up on your screen is 113 Collier Street. So records on 113 Collier Street, which has no formal or common name, are unclear as to when the home was built. Based on the classic Gothic architecture, it is believed that the home is between 125 and 145 years old. This home is unique as it features a bay with four windows, where typically this style of home would have three bay windows. The double window on the third floor, however, is not original. Rather, it appears that the roof was extended to protrude forward to cover the two small arched windows on the third floor. The original design featured one small arched window with a flat roof above the quad bay window on the second floor. The home was once featured an ornate verge board, which is a hand-built decoration that hung from the gable, which extended from the bottom of the roof all the way to the peak. The home also once featured what was known as a widow's walk, a rather ominous term for a rooftop balcony. While this home has been renovated numerous times and several original features have been removed, the committee believes it stands as yet another example of excellent stewardship and plays an important role in maintaining the historic character of Collier Street's east end. And we have another award on Collier Street as well. I'll wait for that picture to come up on the screen. All right. Many of you will recognize this building perched on top of a hill, Trinity Anglican Church. Perched on the hill in the middle of downtown Berry is Trinity Anglican Church, construction on the church finished in 1864, three years before Confederation, and has been home to the Anglican congregation ever since. The building was built in the Regency Gothic style, which can be identified by the arched windows as well as multiple arched grills in the windows themselves. As is common for the Gothic style, the church also features a prominent tower or turret that is supported by buttresses caped with basinery. The tower was once topped by a spire. Unfortunately, the spire was struck by lightning in 1934 and was never replaced. The committee selected Trinity Anglican Church for a Heritage Award as it is an excellent example of how continued use of heritage buildings and diligent stewardship can enrich our community by providing a tangible connection to the past. And I do have some fond memories of going to church here while I was young, mostly just on Christmas, but it's a treacherous hill to get up in the winter, as I'm sure many people will know. And I'd encourage everyone who's walking around the downtown to take a stroll up the hill because there are some lovely views of our downtown from up there. So congratulations to Trinity Anglican Church.
Well, thank you councillor Ailin and councillor Harris, and congratulations to all of our winners. I don't know whether sort of virtually that works quite as well as in person, but we'll do our best. Just a reminder that next week is Heritage Week, and for those that are watching at home, you can take a historical walking tour of our city. If you go to the city's website and you type in heritage, there are seven walks that you can make. You can download them and you and your family can go for a walk socially distanced, of course, and all meeting all the COVID requirements. But check out some of the historic buildings that are in our, in our city. Or else you can go to the Heritage Trust Ontario website for a listing of all kinds of heritage things that you and your family can do. Mr. Mayor, I would like to just take a moment to thank the committee members of Heritage Berry. They're a really great dedicated group that work very hard and they're very knowledgeable. And I'm sure councillor Harris, Jim Harris would agree with me. We, we have a great time sitting on that committee. So thank you for that. And also, we have some very knowledgeable and dedicated city staff that support the committee, and I'm forever grateful for them as well. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you councillor Reetma, and I wanted to give the recipients who are all with us tonight online a chance to say something. So at this point, I think what I'll do is I'll just go in reverse order. And Ryan, I see is bringing in our award recipients onto the Zoom here. Thank you all for being with us. And I'll ask Ms. Packham to speak on behalf of Trinity Church. It's a little-known historic fact that in 1934, when the spire was hit by lightning, that's when Marty McFly was able to come back into the future. Anyway, Trinity Anglican Church, such an incredible landmark property in that if, if you've never been inside Trinity, it's extraordinary on the outside. It is even more extraordinary on the inside. The ornate wood carvings and detailing, the stained glass and the recognition of so many figures through the course of Berry's history who were part of that congregation are all features in that, in that absolutely beautiful space of worship. So Ms. Packham, would you like to say a few words on behalf of Trinity Anglican?
I certainly would. I conceal a view. You can't see me though. You can see me? No. Okay, so I'm the administrator at Trinity, and I wanted to tell you that this was a pleasant surprise. It has certainly been a difficult year to be a church, to do church, and we have had to learn to do things in different ways. We have certainly, I think, more than risen to that occasion. For example, we celebrated our 185th anniversary this year, and we did it virtually. We made a video and shared it with past parishioners and just really anybody who was interested. And Mayor Lehman, thank you very much for contributing content to that video. It was much appreciated. So this was indeed an honor. We, we don't really know what the future looks like. The downtown is a different place than it was when Trinity was put together 185 years ago, but we hope to continue to play a prominent role in the downtown of Berry. And thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you very much, Joy, and thank you to everyone at Trinity who has continued to provide such great stewardship to that building and a congregation that has year after year shown its commitment to, to the building itself and the history of Trinity through their generous contributions towards the upkeep of, of the church. Richly deserved recognition. Next, I'll call on Chris Menzies to talk about 113 Collier, and I have to indulge in a moment of personal connection here. Until 12 years ago, this was the location for my family's business, and that four-windowed bay was my dad's office. So I know this building extremely well, lest anybody think there's anything here. I'm not involved in selecting the winners of the Heritage Awards. I just get to be here for the award ceremony. But certainly, it's been a huge pleasure as somebody who has an emotional investment in that building to see that the new owners MHBC planning who have continued to maintain this, this beautiful office. So Ms. Menzies.
Thank you, you worship members of council. Once again, Chris Menzies, I'm one of the owners of 113 Collier Street and very proud to continue with the legacy of maintaining this building. And on behalf of myself and my partners, we wanted to take the opportunity to thank not only City Council, but the Heritage Committee and staff for taking the time to recognize our efforts to preserve the building and for giving us the ability to maintain a little piece of Berry's heritage. This award is much appreciated. Council may be aware that we also have a cultural heritage division in our office. So this, this award is very true to our hearts, and we are very proud to be part of this award ceremony as well as proud to be part of downtown Berry. And thank you once again.
Thank you, Ms. Menzies. And it should be noted, I mean, any historic building comes with its own challenges, its own unexpected twists and turns, and always additional costs and occasionally additional extra work that's required. And you do it because you're committed to it, not because it's the easy kind of place to, to have as an office. So thank you to you and your colleagues who've continued to keep up this property and, and, and preserve its legacy for Berry. Last, I'll call on Elizabeth and John Andrews, Dolphin Andrews and John Andrews to speak on behalf of their beautiful home at 62 William.
Thank you so much for this. It is really beyond anything we could have imagined, the information that we were able to find on this house. We moved up to Berry in 2011 and fell in love with the house immediately. The stained glass transoms over the bedrooms, all on the second floor, just captivated us. And all the problems with the house seemed to fly out of our minds when we made the offer. And we always had intended to do research on the house, but we had young children that made that impossible. And then when they became sort of more capable of sitting still, we went to the Simcoe County Archives, and we discovered things that were quite amazing. We were just blown away by what we were able to find. We, when we put the house on the heritage list, the house was photographed by Raymond Bazowski at Berry Today. And he, when he came, stuck around to write a story on the house. And when that was published, we began to receive artifacts. People started coming to the house and sending things from this family. I'm sorry that you can't see us only because we have so many photos, original framed photos of the house and of the original occupants, including Pilot Officer Jack Patton, who, whose banner flies on the lake shore on Remembrance Day, which is so beautiful for us to drive by and know that we were able to make this contribution. So I did send the essay that I wrote. I wrote this essay because I was so moved to do it, finding, you know, this family and thinking about their loss in the war. And, and, and it was just amazing, you know, to have this opportunity. I sent the essay to councillor Harris and to Tom Vergeba, and I hope that you guys are able to circulate it because I think that for people on the Heritage Committee, it would be a fascinating read just to even scroll through and see the photos. So I can't tell you really how honored we are to be acknowledged like this and to be able, you know, we've been in Berry for 10 years and in these, you know, short years that we've been here to be able to make this kind of a contribution is just so powerful for us, and we're truly, truly honored. And thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth, and thanks for such in-depth research. You know, there's the, there's the physical work. There's the time and money that's put into the restoration and maintenance, but then there's that, that time and effort that's put into the research and, and learning the story. And it's, there are so many fascinating stories. But to, to learn those things must have been immensely rewarding. And I love the story of people sending artifacts. It must be something about Old Allendale because in the train station, when the city began the work there about eight years ago, the initial work there to start restoring windows and things, people actually started showing up to the property with things that they had in their family for multiple generations that had been at one point liberated, removed from the station for whatever reason or another, and they, they wanted the city to have them. So thank you for, for telling us those stories and for the research you've done, and most of all, for the upkeep of your beautiful property. So members of council, please join me and councillor Reetma in a round of virtual clapping. Congratulations to our award winners. Thank you so much.
That's great.
Okay, we are so fortunate to have many of these beautiful and historically significant properties from the early days of Berry and Allendale and Shandy Bay, so well-preserved for future generations. And in closing, thank you to the members of Heritage Berry for your ongoing labor of love in supporting the work of the committee. And again, congratulations to our award recipients tonight. We will move forward with our agenda now. We have no reports from officers, deputations and committee reports, no tax application or communication matters. It does bring us to the committee reports. Deputy Mayor Ward, I believe you've got those reports.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section A of the general committee report dated February 1st, 2021, as circulated be received.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section A of the general committee report dated February 1st, 2021, as circulated be received. That is to receive the report of the Finance Corporate Services Committee from January 12th. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of receiving the report, please indicate. Any opposed? None? That carries. Section B.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section B of the report dated February 1st, 2021, be circulated to be adopted.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section B of the general committee report dated February 1st, 2021, is circulated to be adopted. This is the series of items, approval items from the agenda on February 1st. Excuse me. Yeah, sorry, that is February 1st. Berry Bay Cats Baseball Club, Route 11 Service Model, Transit Planning Principles, Inclusive Community Grant, the Internal Audit Status Report, the municipal naming for streets in two subdivisions in the inwards 10 and 9, signed bylaw and fraction fee invoices, staff report, update to the winter maintenance policies, also staff report, and the two items for discussion regarding all way stops, one at Penetang Wishing Road in Indianero, the other at Brock and Innisville. Comments or questions on any of those items? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor? Anybody opposed? None? That carries. Section C first.
By myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section C of the general committee report dated February 1st, 2021, is circulated to be received.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section C of the general committee report dated February 1st, as circulated be received. It's to receive the presentation on the Stormwater Asset Management Plan. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor? Any opposed? None? That carries. Section D, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section D of the general committee report dated February 1st, 2021, is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by councillor Thompson, that section D of the general committee report dated February 1st, 2021, is circulated to be adopted. And this is to adopt the Stormwater Asset Management Plan and the results of the investigation regarding additional parking restrictions on Stanley Street. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of section D? Any opposed? None? That carries. Okay, that I believe completes the general committee report. It's on tonight's agenda. We have one direct motion. It is regarding a temporary change to the downtown curbside pilot program. There is a memo on the circ list related to this matter. Councillor Ailin, would you care to introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. It's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Jim Harris, that an additional four on-street parking spaces be converted to curbside pickup spots in addition to the eight approved by City Council as part of the downtown curbside pickup pilot program, that the location of the additional curbside pickup locations be determined jointly by the Business Improvement Association, BIA, the Transit and Parking Strategy and Economic and Creative Development Departments, and the Enforcement Services Branch to ensure spaces are distributed evenly throughout the downtown core in a manner that supports current health protocols and traffic movement. And finally, that the four additional curbside pickup locations be in place until the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit returns to the orange restrict level as identified in the province of Ontario's COVID-19 response framework for the opening of the downtown patio program.
Okay, thank you very much. We have direct motion moved by councillor Ailin, seconded by councillor Jim Harris, then additional four on-street parking spaces be converted to curbside pickup spots in addition to the eight approved by City Council as part of the downtown curbside pickup pilot project program. The, the location of the additional curbside pickup locations be determined jointly by the BIA, the Transit Parking Strategy and Economic and Creative Development Departments, and the Enforcement Services Branch to ensure spaces are distributed evenly throughout the downtown core in a manner that supports health protocols and traffic movement, and that those four additional curbside pickup locations be in place until the SMDHU's area returns to the orange restrict level as identified in the province of Ontario's COVID-19 response framework. Councillor Ailin, did you want to say anything related to this?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. So this was a request that came from the Downtown Berry Business Improvement Association. And it does, it does seem like a small thing to do, but it makes a big difference for the local small businesses who are struggling in our downtown right now. So I would like to reiterate for the public, let's get out and support our local businesses safely. Curbside pickup, takeout, there are many options available, and hopefully this makes it easier for us and the community to support those struggling businesses. So thank you to the downtown BIA for bringing forward such a positive and constructive initiative.
Thanks councillor Ailin. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Deputy Mayor Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. There was just a bit of a discrepancy between what councillor Ailin read and what you read. He said it would be the thought when either the, the orange level restrict or the thing. I just wanted to make sure they were the same motion.
Yeah, my apologies. The, the bottom line was cut off on the motion form that I've got, so I didn't read that. But the motion is as councillor Ailin presented it and printed on the public agenda circulating in advance, which includes the line, "Or when the patio program commences." Thanks Deputy Mayor Ward. That's my fault. Okay, any other questions, comments on the direct motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the direct motion, please indicate. Any opposed? None? That carries. Thank you very much, members of council. We do not have any presentation items on tonight's agenda, which brings us all the way to inquiries of staff. Deputy Mayor Ward, do you have any inquiries of staff?
I have none.
Councillor Morales, inquiries of staff.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I just was a question for Ms. James Reed for Access Berry. With Elizabeth's permission, Elizabeth being the presenter from the Heritage Awards, with her permission and anyone else who we need to ask, could we publish that essay on our social media channels? I know we're doing a lot more economic development, once or twice or every two weeks. I think it'd be great to also highlight content like this to reach a new audience that would have otherwise not known about it. So is that possible?
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to councillor Morales. Absolutely. I was actually thinking the same thing during the presentation. We are issuing a press release tomorrow with respect to our Heritage Week, so that would be perfect timing. So we'll reach out through the clerk and get that permission.
Perfect. And just an add-on while you were talking, the Berry Historical Archive, I believe, which is different than the Simcoe one that Elizabeth was talking about, if it is different, we could reach out to them because they have their own audience, or we could recommend to Elizabeth to reach out.
Thanks for that councillor Morales. Councillor Kundal.
Thank you, worship. Through you to Ms. Miller. As we were referencing the patio season, I caught in a circulation list, happy news that staff are looking at intending to do the patios everywhere program, so much broader than the downtown. Was hoping you could share publicly if there's any information, business owners looking to have a patio can appreciate about where to fund that information or when that call for intent to have a patio might occur.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Through you to councillor Kundal. Yes, staff are working on that. We should have a memo back on the circulation list in the next several weeks. Staff and economic development, enforcement services and development services are just working up. in the next several weeks. Staff and Economic Development Enforcement Services and Development Services are just working out the details. They'll be very similar to last year and will apply across the city. And there will be forms to fill out and a dedicated staff team to assist where necessary.
Thank you. My appreciation. Many were asking and very pleased to hear that that was on the horizon. So my my appreciation to the team.
My apologies. Any other inquiries of staff, members of council? Okay, seeing none. Announcements, Deputy Mayor Ward.
I have none.
Okay, Counselor Morales and Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Just wanted to promote to Ward nine residents on Wednesday, February 24th at 7:00 PM on Zoom. Mayor Lehman and myself are going to have the Ward nine Town Hall. So just getting it nice and early, links on Facebook, on the City of Barry Facebook page as well. I already recognized a name or two on the invite list and see you all there.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Morales, for that. Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with all of you and with the public that the Cornerstone to Recovery Women's Treatment Center, the contract is signed, the drawings are done, the money is exchanged where it needs to go. And the opening is hopefully this July, so July 2021. It will have 12 treatment beds, six residential, all of them are residential beds, but also six transitional housing beds. There's some people that I definitely want to say thank you to. So thank you Blaine Hobson, who is the co-founder and executive director of Cornerstone to Recovery. Peter Brewett, the Director of Programs and Development, for all of your support this entire time, giving myself, Mayor Lehman, Mark Cohen tours and answering all our questions along the way. Also to Maureen Bornbaum, who is, who created the presentation for city council. And most importantly, to my friend and fellow advocate Mark Cohen, who has helped with this project behind the scenes and has done so much to make sure that this happens. And I really, really want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for that and to all of you and to staff. So thank you for for voting this unanimously. It was, it was a lot of work for all of us and it's just going to be a great thing to see come to fruition. And I really also am excited that the bins will hopefully be out soon to divert the textiles from our landfill. This is a great accomplishment for our city and it wouldn't have happened without all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Harris. Counselor Aylton.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I have two announcements. The first is a neighborhood meeting for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment in Ward 2. So residents can go to the city's proposed developments page and click on Ward 2 and find the information under 150 Toronto Street and 54 Ross Street. This is the property that is beside Victoria Village that is now owned by Victoria Village. So the proposal here is to extend the existing zoning for Victoria Village over the subject lands. And there's no development concept at this time. So that neighborhood meeting is taking place on Tuesday, February 16th. That'll be virtually from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. And again, residents can go to the proposed developments page on the city's website to find that information. The second event that I would like to draw the public's attention to is the Barry Toxic Drug Crisis Vigil. That's taking place a week from today. This is a virtual event and I'll read a piece of the event page for the public. Join us as we come together as a community to mourn our friends, partners, children, and neighbors' loss to this ongoing toxic drug crisis. While we can't physically be together, we can light a candle and virtually share pictures, tears, smiles, laughter, grief, warm memories, and our collective need for something to change. And residents can go to my website, kena.ca, and find the link right on the front page there for that event. That'll be happening a week from today, Monday, February 15th, from 7:00 PM till 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Owen. Did I see another card for announcements? Counselor Thompson.
Thank you through you, Mayor Lehman. Just to let residents know that on Wednesday, February 10th at 5 o'clock, there's a virtual meeting for the proposed community garden at Lampman Lane, and you can register on the Barry website.
Thanks very much for that. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Thanks for, thanks for reminding me, Counselor Thompson. We also have the Batto Community Garden Zoom meeting, and that is February this, the 11th, this Thursday. And you can go to barry.ca or on my website as well to find information how to join that Zoom.
Thanks very much to both of you as award counselors. It's barry.ca/communitygardens. If anyone actually types URLs instead of just searching stuff, but anyway, those meetings are held at the specific times online. But if you can't make it at that time, don't worry. There is a survey which is online there. And you can, of course, submit your your comments at any point, but the survey is a very helpful way for you to be part of that discussion as well. If you can't make the 5 o'clock meetings, Lampman Lane on the 10th, Batto on the 11th later this week. Any other announcements, Members of Council? See, seeing none, I do have quite a few tonight. First of all, I'm pleased to announce the City of Barry's Streetscape Project on Dunlop Street, led by the Infrastructure Department, has won an award, the Economic Developers Council of Ontario Award of Excellence in the Urban Building Initiatives category. That project obviously focused on enlarging the pedestrian space, accessibility, enhanced lighting, visibility, and service opportunities. Was completed during COVID on an expedited timeline. Congratulations to the infrastructure team on delivering that project and to Access Barry and all departments who collaborated to ensure that our residents and businesses were at least engaged during that process. Despite the changing timelines and the twists and turns of the project, we were able to get it completed ahead of time and we very much appreciate the recognition from Edco with that award. The City of Barry joined the Province-wide Wastewater Surveillance Initiative for COVID-19 Monitoring in Municipal Wastewater. The city will provide samples from the wastewater treatment facility to labs, which will run an analysis to determine the amount of COVID-19 present in the wastewater. And this can also be used to detect variants of the virus. This is part of COVID Ontario's COVID-19 Preparedness Plan to try and identify, manage, and prevent outbreaks. And for the duration of the pandemic, will provide some degree of early warning of additional spread. So thank you. This is something that was started in the City of Ottawa earlier in the pandemic, and Barry is will benefit from joining this. In lieu of the traditional Winterfest and Family Day activities throughout the month of February, the city presents Hello Winter. This is a month of fun, engaging in safe virtual programming to help residents enjoy the winter season safely with their immediate households. Following the advice of the Health Unit, the programming will include some reimagined Winterfest favorites as well as new virtual programming to keep kids, adults, and families entertained. There will be an online community snow sculpture challenge where residents are invited to build creative snow creations and submit pictures to an online map. Virtual activities will be added online throughout the month. So there's new content each week that goes by featuring nature-based adventures, how-to videos, behind-the-scenes tours, and performances with Barry Public Library, McLaren Arts Center, Conservation Authority, and Children's Performance Group called Team T and J. For outdoor exercise, the city's parks, trails, and rinks remain open. Residents are reminded to follow health and safety guidelines. There's more information about the event at barry.ca/hellowinter. Did want to draw attention to the fact that it has been confirmed that the Ontario Provincial Police will be conducting the investigation into the Dunlop Street arrest and the conduct of Barry Police Officers that took place on Thursday, February 4th. The OPP Professional Standards Unit will be conducting the investigation. And anyone who was present at the time of that occurrence is asked to contact the OPP at 1-888-310-1122. That's 1-888-310-1122. A reminder that changes were made to on-street parking on January 1st. The past locations and parking pass structures as part of the city's parking strategy. The on-street parking restrictions continue to be in place until March 31st. And I did want to note the announcement today as well from the Ontario Government. Unfortunately, we did not receive any details yet as to what level we will go back into. But certainly the positive news that Ontario, the stay-at-home order will be ending. And in our region, that date is supposed to be Tuesday of next week. We will hear apparently later in the week what level of the color-coded framework we will go back into. That depends, excuse me, that depends on public health metrics like caseload and percent positivity and the spread of the virus. And what that means is what we do this week will probably determine how much we can open next week. So simple messages, nothing changed today, and we really need people to stay at home for one more week. Because after that week, it is very likely that the restrictions will be lifted. But the degree to which they're lifted and indeed what happens on Tuesday is still up to the medical officers of health based on what the situation is in the community at that time. A couple of things I will note that were announced today because they've been of considerable interest as well in the community. The province has announced that businesses will reopen with capacity limitations that are based on the the capacity of their establishment. What that appears to mean, and I say appears because we don't have all the details yet, but it means a more level playing field because smaller businesses will be able to open with 25% capacity similar to larger stores. So some of that inequity that was created with the restrictions the first time, looks like it will be different this time around. But again, these details will come from the province in in due course. But I will end on a very significant positive note. This is where thousands of jobs in our area, ski hills, will be able to open next week with restrictions. Some restrictions in place as to how they can open, but the ski industry in our area is more than 2,000 jobs. So it is a very significant employer. And if indeed the measures are going to allow a safe opening of the ski industry, that is a good thing for many people who were laid off just after Christmas. Okay, that completes my announcements for tonight. It brings us to the bylaws. Deputy Mayor Ward.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that leave be granted, introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 12.
Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 12. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of Bill 12, please indicate. Anybody opposed? None? That carries? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Ward.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that leave be granted, introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 13.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 13. Comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, those in favor of Bill 13, the confirmation bylaw? Anybody opposed? None? That carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn city council? Moved by Counselor Natalie Harris, seconded by Counselor Jim Harris. We are adjourned as city council. I'll thank everybody. And we are not meeting next week because of the Family Day holiday. So for those watching and playing the home game, we will be back on Monday. Sorry, we're back the day after that for the committee meeting on the Tuesday. Okay? Sorry, have I got that right, Madam Clerk? No, I don't have that right. It is actually two weeks. I was right the first time. We'll see everybody on two weeks from tonight for General Committee on Monday, the 23rd. And if Members of Town Council can stay online for a minute, please.